Good evening. I'd like to call the Licensing Board for December 16th to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, Licensing Board Minutes from regular meeting, December 2nd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number two, original non-reserved Class B combination liquor license for Pint and Chaser LLC, the Pint and Chaser Pub, 160 South Main.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number three, operator's license, a list of which is in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number four, appointment of Amber R. Zubricki, GPM Southeast LLC, Restore Number 4505, 1229 South Main Street, Restore Number 4506, 1211 West Washington Street, Restore Number 4507, 1512 West Washington Street, and Restore Number 4508, 1650 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And with that, I will adjourn the Licensing Board. We're going to take one item from the Common Council out of order, so I will call the Common Council to order. Note that we have seven aldermen with Alderman kiss absent and excuse. The item we're taking is number 24, a resolution honoring Cynthia Clemmie. And I have the resolution here somewhere. Here it is. Want me to read this one? Okay, an honoration, a resolution honoring Cynthia Clemmie. Whereas Cynthia Clemmie began her career with the City of West Bend in the Clerk's Office as a clerk typist in 1975, she transferred to the Building Inspector's Office in 1977, and then the Assessor's Office in 1982, where she served until October 31st, 2019. And whereas during her tenure Cynthia Clemmie became a state certified as an assessment technician and property appraiser. And whereas Cynthia Clemmie has made a true, has been a true public servant through her exceptional knowledge of the community and her customer service skills, Cynthia's commitment to excellence and attention to detail have been indispensable assets to the Assessment Department, helping accomplish the 2018 reevaluation and the 2019 software conversion. Therefore, be it resolved, the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Cynthia Clemmie and expresses its deep appreciation for her 44 years of loyal and dedicated service. Cynthia. If you'd like, come on up and tell us any parting thoughts you've got.
Okay. First of all, thank you for this resolution honoring me for 44 years of dedication to the City of West Bend. I don't know where those 44 years went to. It went very fast, I think. I can truly say that I enjoyed working for the City of West Bend. I enjoyed working, helping the citizens of West Bend. But now that I have a little taste of retirement, I think I'm going to enjoy that more. So, thank you again. Thank you.
Well, with 44 years of knowledge going out the door, it's going to be a kind of a sad day for the city. It's going to be hard to replace you, but we thank you for everything you've done and wish you well in your next adventure.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I will recess the Common Council meeting over to Board of Public Works.
All right. Thank you. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have nine items on tonight's agenda. The first is the approval of the minutes from October 21st.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, I have most, sorry, I'm having a moment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number two, ordinance amending section 13.18 of the Municipal Code Sewer Service Charges. Therefore, by Ruth Miller.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, the sewer utility is proposing an amendment to Municipal Code, Chapter Number 13, which governs the municipal utilities. The changes to Subchapter 3 are reflected in Section 1318 Sewer Service Charges. These changes are necessary due to the rate increase that was approved by the Board of Public Works and Common Council on September 23rd, 2019. The new rates now need to be incorporated into the Municipal Code. These rates will become effective on January 1st, 2020. We are recommending approval of this amendment to the Municipal Code. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ruth? If that'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number three is the ordinance repealing and recreating Section 13.28 Sub 2 Sub B Sub 1 of the Municipal Code, wastewater discharge permits, reporting requirements for permutty. Another presentation by Ruth.
Thank you again. The sewer utility is proposing to repeal and recreate Section 1328 2B1 of the Municipal Code. This section relates to wastewater discharge permits and the reporting requirements for the permotees. The proposed change is a change in language that is in direct response to a request from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, following a routine pre-treatment inspection. This verbiage change is directly related to the reporting requirements for effluent being discharged into our system. In the first sentence of the section, we propose replacing the language for biannual reporting requirements, "from unless required more frequently in the categorical pre-treatment standard or by the city," to "unless otherwise directed by its permit." We are recommending approval of this change. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number four is the approval of grant of privilege agreements with the carriage walks on 8th Avenue. Presentation by Max Marshall. Max?
Good evening. Thank you. This item is a request for the Board and Council to approve a grant of privilege agreement that were submitted for the properties at 321, 323 South 8th Avenue and 105, 107 South 8th Avenue. Those grant of privileges are for carriage walks that were in place prior to the street reconstruction and that the property owners wished to reinstall. So, you've seen numerous of those in the past couple of years with the reconstruction of this road and with other carriage walks requests from property owners. So, these, these grant of privileges are fairly common from what, from what we do in our processes, and we recommend approval of those two agreements for those properties.
Thanks, Max. Any questions for Max?
Quick question, Max. The property at 105, 107, 8th and on Hickory, again on Hickory, it looks like there's three gr, that's one grant of privilege, covers three carriage walks.
Yes, yes. We attached a grant of privilege to the property, and that property had three carriage walks, two on 8th Avenue and the one on Hickory. And then, so, when we did the reconstruction of 8th Avenue, we did part of Hickory as well. We came through to adjust the curb on that section, and so we had to take out the carriage walk in that area, so that we would like to reinstall it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number five, the approval of long-term stormwater maintenance agreement for Cedar Community, Cedar Ridge Campus. Max?
Thank you. So, the Cedar Community is proposing new development on their campus, where they're going to add duplexes, as well as a private drive to, to access on scenic, scenic drive. And as part of the development, they're handling the stormwater management with various improvements, including two ponds on the property. And they obtained a stormwater management permit from the city, and as required by our MS4 permit, we enter into an agreement with the property owner in order to ensure that they will maintain those stormwater management improvements, so they continue to function as intended. So, this is a typical agreement that is associated with the stormwater management permits that we grant to properties, and we recommend approval of this agreement as well.
Thanks, Max. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number six is the permission to advertise 2020 construction contracts. Max?
Thank you again. We have three contracts listed in this request to get permission to advertise. One contract is for Bittersweet Drive, Green Valley Place and Edward Court Reconstruction. We have installed watermen in Green Valley Place and Edward Court this year, and in 2020 we proposed to do the same in Bittersweet Drive, and then on all these streets, to also do work on the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, and we construct the entire street. The second contract is for school place sanitary and storm sewer replacement. This is a street where we've had several problems over many, many years with the storm sewer constantly failing and requiring our Department of Public Works to patch the road multiple times, and it's time to, to reconstruct this road. And the third contract is for Forest Avenue reconstruction from, from Water Street to about Linwood Terrace. This last contract is associated with potential developments in the Tiff District. We know that one development is moving forward. I recently learned that the second development is not, but we had prepared everything for the street reconstruction, and we have the contract document, the permits, and I had already written the memo for a permission to advertise. So, I just wanted to still get the permission to advertise, even though we may not advertise in 2020. It depends if we get another project for the southern portion of, of the area that we were looking at developing, and, and therefore, that, that's why we want to request permission to advertise those three contracts.
Thanks, Max.
Max, the, the other project, that's the Main Street, Main Street, what would it be, south of Paradise? Was that the piece you're talking about?
Um, no. No. I talked about Bittersweet Drive, Green Valley Place, Edward Court, which are south of Vine Street, and then the other project is School Place on the north side.
Right. No, you, you mentioned that the third of those, the Forest Avenue, might not happen in 2020. It might happen later if something, if a project came in south, in the south end. Is that the, the Main Street that we?
No, this project is located just south of Water Street and west of Indiana Avenue, so it's a little north of us right now. Yes, go ahead.
He's referring to the southern half of that parcel, if it, if that develops.
Well, yeah, I was aware of that. I was, he, he mentioned that there might be another project.
Yeah, that's the parcel he's referring to.
Oh, okay. All right.
Sorry for the confusion.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number seven is the request to delegate signature for approval of grants of privileges. Max?
Thank you again. So, over the past several years, we have made an effort to kind of regulate private improvements at our place in city street rightways and alleys, and we've seen more and more grant of privileges coming to Board of Public Work and Council, looking for approval for private improvements in public rightofway. And the suggestion was made to allow staff to grant those privileges directly, if it's, for example, for carriage walks or other simpler items. Obviously, if there would be more complicated items, we would bring it to the full Board and Council for discussion and approval. A similar process was used to grant easements to We Energies. At the time, it was Webco, on land that was controlled by the city, for example, through a park, then the parks director was able to sign. If it was on a property owned by sewer utility or water utility, they would be able to sign the easement, unless there was secondary impact, like we see, we saw earlier this year with the Walnut Street parking lot, then we would bring it to the Board. So, we're asking for the same kind of, of permission here, to allow the city engineer to sign some of those grant of privileges directly, instead of bringing it to the Board every time, in order to streamline the process.
Thanks, Max.
Max, I want to compliment you in looking into this. I think this just stops any slow process of some of these, especially carriage walks, from being delayed coming to us. This way, your office can handle it, and they can proceed to getting that taken care of a lot quicker. So, compliments to your, your organization for putting that together. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number eight is the acceptance of public improvements for Shepherd's Court. Max?
Thank you again. Fleet Farm, the Fleet Farm development located off of West Washington Street required the construction or the extension of Shepherd's Drive south of Washington Street and created Shepherd's Court. Because of the condition of the intersection with State Highway 33, there were various requirements by the DOT, including that part of that section be a public rightofway, and it had to be installed, built by Fleet Farm, and we, the city entered into a developer's agreement with Fleet Farm in order to build those improvements. And once they are built to our standards, and after we review them, we bring them to the Board and Council for acceptance of these improvements, so they become city property. This is the same type of process we've used in the past on developments that built public improvements. The improvements that we recommend acceptance of for this project are the road gravel base, curb and gutter, concrete pavement, binder course of asphalt, surface course of asphalt, sidewalk, and rightofway restoration. If the Board and Council concur and approve those, accept those improvements, there will be a one-year warranty, which will expire December 16, 2020.
Thank you, Max. Any questions for Max?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Item number nine, the acceptance of public improvements on West Washington Street for Maurice Honda. Max?
Thank you again. This is a similar situation as Fleet Farm, and this time for Maurice Honda on West Washington Street. In this case, with the location of their driveway, they were, they needed to modify some improvement in Washington Street with Turn Lane and Midian Island, et cetera. And because the city has jurisdiction on portion of Washington Street in this area, some of those improvements are owned by the city and need to be approved by the Board of Public Works and the Common Council, similar to Shepherd's Court that I described earlier. We have inspected the construction of those improvements, and we recommend acceptance of the road gravel base, the curb and gutter, concrete pavement, storm sewer, the signage, and the rightofway restoration. Just like for Fleet Farm, there will be a one-year warranty that will expire on December 16, 2020.
Thank you, Max. Any questions for Max?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
And with no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the December 16th Finance Committee to order. Recognize we have eight items on the agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes from the December 2nd meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number two is an initial resolution authorizing the general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed 3.6 million for community development projects within tax incremental district. With a presentation by John Cameron of Ellers. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Cameron with Ellers, and what I'd like to do is just walk through the pre-sale report that is in your packets, and I handed out via hard copy tonight, and happy to answer any questions. What we're here for is the authorization of 3,600,000 of taxable general obligation community development bonds, Series 2020A. The bonds will be issued for the financing of the acquisition of land within tax incremental District Number 14, which is a district that you are actively working on right now, as well as a more minor amount of professional services costs also related to Tiff District Number 14. The debt for the bonds will be paid from increment generated within Tiff District Number 14 and/or ad valorem property taxes if Tiff increment revenue is insufficient. Included within the sizing of the debt, in addition to the land acquisition and the professional service costs, is also two years of capitalized interest to allow the interest payments to be paid prior to tax increment being available to help make the debt service payments, as there's always a two-year lag from the time that taxing increment is generated to the time that it actually is, is flowing into the, into the district. The bonds are being issued as general obligations of the city, which will count against your general obligation debt limit after the issuance of this debt offering. The principal outstanding is estimated to be at 49.9 million in total, which would be at just under 34% of your geo-debt limit, leaving you with approximately 98 million of remaining capacity. The bonds are being issued for a term of 20 years. The principal will be due February 1st, 20, in the years 2023 through 2040. Interest is payable every six months, starting next year in 2020. The bonds will also be issued with a call feature, allowing the city to either call the bonds, pay them off, or refinance them for savings if interest rates are more favorable at the call date. The bonds would be estimated to be callable on February 1st, 2029, or any point thereafter, depending on, you know, where, where conditions are, or where the overall financial position is of Tiff District Number 14. One of the other features I'd like to point out with this is, from a rating standpoint, we will be seeking a rating, like you've, like you've always done, but what we're proposing on this debt issuance is to move from Moody's to Standard and Poor's. And I know this is something that I think the city has long since wanted to do, as a result of previous debt issuances and our work with Moody's, so we're happy to, to see and move in that direction for this debt issuance, and, and hopefully going forward beyond this. In terms of the method of sale, this debt would be issued on a competitive sale basis, as really has been the, the past practice of the, the city, particularly with general obligation debt. On the day of sale, we would, we would take bids, hopefully a lot of bids, from, from underwriters in the morning, and be able to then have either the city administrator or finance administrator slash treasurer be able to sign off on the, on the bonds in the afternoon. One of the differences between this offering and debt offerings that you've done in the past, and one of the items that you have on the agenda tonight, is the approval of a parameters resolution. So, this sale is proposed to be done via a parameter sale. And the reason for that is the day of your January meeting happens to fall on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So, while you'll be there that night, and will be there that night for Tiff District Number 14, we're unable to do the bond sale that day because banks will be closed. So, what a parameters sale does is it, it authorizes the city to, and us as Ellers, as your municipal advisor, to conduct the sale on a, a day other than your regularly scheduled meeting, and as long as the sale meets the parameters specified in the parameters resolution, it authorizes your designees, in this case, the city administrator and the finance administrator, either one, to sign off on the, on the sale of the bonds. And we always want at least more than one person, just in case somebody is unavailable that day, sick, whatever the case may be. We've had, we've had some, some good stories over the years over people not being available, so we always like to have more than, more than one. In terms of the parameters resolution, I think kind of the most important item or, or most identifiable item on the resolution itself is the maximum true interest cost or, or overall weighted interest rate on the bonds themselves, and that we have specified at not to exceed 4%. We, we fully intend and, and hope that the sale will come in significantly better than 4%, but again, those are the maximum parameters under which the sale would be authorized to occur. If you look at page four of the pre-sale report in terms of the, the schedule, we're under a bit of a, a tight schedule with, with this debt issuance. We're looking to do the conference call with Standard and Poor's, really that, that first full week back after the holidays, the week of January 6th, due diligence call on the preliminary offering document at, at roughly the same time. preliminary offering document at, at roughly the same time, doing the, distributing the official statement the week of January 13th, and then really doing the parameter sale on Tuesday, the, the 21st, which would just be one day after your, your normal meeting, and then closing on the bonds February 5th. And, and I believe that you have to really have those funds in hand by February 5th to be able to pay out on the land sale by, by the following day, February 6th. So this gives you, from a timeline standpoint, puts you right on target to be able to, to make that happen. In terms of the spreadsheets, these are the next few pages I won't, I won't walk through in any great detail. Phil Cossen from our, our office will be here tomorrow for the Joint Review Board meeting to, to walk through TIF District Number 14 and, and this, this debt issuance in particular with that group, as well as with the Plan Commission and, and the full financials within the TIF project plan. The only item that I will point out, if you jump to the, to the last page, it's just a, a one-year trend in where interest rates have been. And as you can see, interest rates really have, have fallen over the last year. It's really a good time to be in the market, kind of the low watermark was, was right before the 1st of November, kind of right around the Thanksgiving time. Interest rates have creeped up just a little bit as we got into the holidays, but have started to come back down a little bit. So really a good time to be, to be in the market. And with that, happy to answer any questions or turn it back over.
Thanks, John. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Glad to see that we're actually going to use Standard and Poor's this time instead of Moody's. That's been something that's been on the list for a while.
Any comments or questions for John at all? Yes, Chris?
Just a quick clarification. So the maximum TIC here, 4%, so do we have any recourse if, if the bids do come in pretty close to that? Or do you have a set parameter, I guess maybe, that you put in place that if it's, you know, within so many percent, so many decibels of that percentage point? Are you going to give us advice or?
Yeah, as long as, the parameters resolution would say that as long as it comes in below that, you'd be able to authorize the, the sale of the bonds.
But if it comes in at like 3.9, for example, there's no recourse we have to say, well, hold on, let's look at this maybe with better timing or?
No, you, you certainly would have the ability to reject the sale if you, if you so chose to, but again, my understanding partly is that you, you need to move forward based on the timing in, in order to, to close on the land. And, you know, if you look at where interest rates have been, I think we're, whoops, we're, we're hopeful that they'll come in better than that, even though this is on a taxable versus taxable.
I agree. I crossed my fingers too. All right, thank you.
Sure. Any other comments or questions for John? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any last call? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number three is a resolution directing the publication of notice to electors relating to the bond issue. That resolution is in part of our packets.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. And finally, item number four is a resolution establishing parameters for the sale of the not to exceed 3.6 million taxable general obligation community development bonds, Series 2020A.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, and that motion carries. Thanks a lot, John. I appreciate all the work.
Yep, thank you.
Item number five is a resolution accepting donation from Mr. and Mrs. Michael Norman, with a presentation by Chief Kudick. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. You have before you a resolution to accept a donation from Mr. and Mrs. Norman. Mrs. Norman received paramedic intercept care through us with, in conjunction with Newburgh Fire and Rescue. If you remember what a paramedic intercept is, it's when we take two paramedics. The local ambulance responds, in this case, Newburgh Fire, and they determine that they need a higher level of care, so they call for a paramedic intercept. That's two of our paramedics in one of our vehicles, along with the medication bags that only paramedics can administer. We went to that ambulance call and proceeded to treat her, and, in her words, saved her life. So she was grateful for that and gave us this donation that you have before you.
Excellent. Well, glad to hear that Mrs. Norman did well. Special thanks to her. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number six is approve the 2019 through 2022 fire contract with the town of West Bend. Again, Chief Kudick.
Yes, thank you, as Max would say. You have before you the contract for the town of West Bend Fire District. We cover a portion of the town of West Bend closest to Cedar Lake and on this side of Cedar Lake. We were in negotiations a little more than a year, I think, with the town. You did notice this is a January 1st of 2019, so we're already operating under the old one until this one is signed. However, the agreement does contain the 2% increase for 19, and they have paid that difference. So that's taken care of. Just a couple highlights. Off of this contract, we did include paramedic service in this contract. This was typically just a fire contract. They could have contracted with anybody to do the EMS portion of it, but we, they liked the paramedic service that we provide, and we included it in the contract. It is a four-year term. This puts us one year off of the town of Barton, so we're not negotiating both contracts at the same time. It does have a clause in there that if either the city of West Bend or the town of West Bend fails to get 2% dues, if it's the town's fault, the town will pay us what we lose out in 2% dues. 2% dues is money from the insurance industry that pays for our fire inspection program. There's self-certification renewal process that you have to do every year, and if, if they fail to do that, we could lose our 2% money, and if they fail to do it on their end, they would have to pay us what, the money that we lost. You did see the terms in the contract. It's roughly a 2% increase every year for the next four years. The next item under that was, A, was the water utility. If we use city water in the town of West Bend, we will invoice the township for the water. This is a requirement, I believe, from water utility, that water not used by city residents but paid for by city residents is invoiced. So that's new. We do have that in the town of Barton contract as well. The reason we bill a township does is that way they can put it on the tax rule or just invoice them. The city does not have a taxing entity in the township, so there was no way for us to claim the money if it wasn't paid. So this way we can, we invoice the township. And the last thing was that the request of the town of West Bend, if they experience a maze, a major decrease in assessed value, such as a major annexation, they can open up the contract. The city kind of countered that with, if they do a major development in the township and the assessed value goes extremely high in that area that we have to now cover, we can open up the contract. But I don't foresee that happening too much in, in this four-year contract. And with that, that is the new contract. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chief. That's kind of a feather in our hat that they chose to go with the paramedic services this year.
Yeah, I said this every time we get a chance, but we have top-quality paramedics. I'll put them up against anybody. They are highly skilled, highly qualified, and if I am in need of a paramedic service, I want it to say West Bend on the side of it, so.
Sounds good. Any comments or questions for Chief?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Item number seven is the approval of the 2020 budgets for TID numbers 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, with a presentation by Mark Petrovich. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. I will just give you a general characterization of, of the district's budgets and answer any questions you have, may have. What you also have is a larger 11-by-17 format spreadsheet that summarizes those districts as well and offers some additional background information. Generally, only three of the 11 districts still have active projects within them. That would be TID number five, which is wrapping up environmental administration, looking for closure on a couple of properties. TID number nine, which is pursuing environmental closeout and still has the Riverwalk Phase Two within its project plan. And TID number 12, which is the work associated with the hotel and office, which you consummated a, a land sale here recently. And that, in TID 12, the project costs there that are still ongoing are the environmental closure, the electric relocation, and also some demolition incentives under that agreement that you approved. All the other eight districts are, their only expenditures are for debt payment or reduction. So of the, of the districts, only those three have, have active project monies. The debt on levy that you're seeing within these budgets are limited, again, only to three districts. TID number seven, TID number 11, and TID number 13. The most significant of that is TID number 11 with about a quarter million dollars of debt on levy this last year. However, as rough as that is, that also, those three total about $447,000, and that is over $177,000 drop from last year. So it's moving in the right direction. There are no borrowings proposed within any of these for the 2020 budget periods within these existing TIDs. We're using excess increment from donor districts number four and number six to eliminate debt on levy for both TIDs number five and nine respectively, as we have been, have been doing for the last few years. We continue to maximize existing funds for previously approved projects or costs. As I indicated, TID number nine is one significant one with both environmental closure and Riverwalk funds that we still plan to expend. And TID number 12, which was the contractual obligations that we recently entered into. Pardon me. Altogether, between the districts 5, 8, and 9, we've managed to assemble approximately $575,000 for repayment to the sewer utility from existing monies. So again, we're moving in the right direction on, on the monies that we advanced ourselves. So with that, I will take any questions you may have or ask that you authorize or approve these budgets for 2020.
Thanks, Mark. I meant to call you today, and I didn't have a chance, so I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how, how long can we keep that recipient-donor TIF agreement in place?
I believe it's about eight years.
Okay.
But it's, it's not an insignificant amount of time. It's, and we're also going to see other debt dropping off as well, so it's, it's a, it's a major factor for us right now, though.
Okay. Good. Any comments or questions for Mark?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Mark. Item number eight is a resolution accepting a donation from the Museum of Wisconsin Art with Economic Development Manager Adam Gitter. Good evening.
Evening. The city of West Bend and the Museum of Wisconsin Art collaborated on the Blooming Holidays Wine Walk, and this is a resolution accepting a donation from them specifically designated for signage.
For what?
For a signage on Riverwalk project.
Very nice. Thank you to the Museum of Wisconsin Art. That's a very generous donation. I appreciate it. Any comments or questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. And being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. I will call the Common Council back into session and note that we have 26 items remaining on the agenda. Item number one is the regular meeting minutes of the Common Council, December 2, 2019.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Items 2 through 16 are the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number 17, ordinance amending Section 13.18 of the municipal code sewer service charges.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number 18, ordinance repealing and recreating Section 13.28 Sub 2 Sub B Sub 1 with the municipal code wastewater discharge permits reporting requirements for permittee.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item number 19, a six-month review of ordinance number 2832, allowing dogs on the Riverwalk. This is something that we passed in spring, and we said we'd review it six months down the road. And Jay?
Yeah, if I could introduce, and then there are representatives from police and Parks and others here in attendance that might want to speak to it as well, if you have, if you have further questions. As Steve mentioned, this was asked to be put back on the agenda after a six-month trial period of dogs allowed on the Riverwalk. I did reach out to the police department, and Chief Boyler shared that they, they only had one complaint since the six-month, during the six-month period, and that was regarding that picking up dog feces. Parks has not had complaints either. Reached out to the commission chairman and, and Mike, who cares for that area on a daily basis. The only request from the Parks Department that they've received is for pet waste stations, or a pest, pet waste station at least. I did have a conversation with Mike Husar, the bid board chairman, and he was, I don't know if you recall, he was in attendance, I think, of the last time this was talked about. He was prepared to recommend to the bid board to purchase some of those waste stations, but only if it was in a more permanent setting. So he wasn't comfortable with moving forward with that after, after the six-month trial. But if, if that were to be continued long-term, I think the bid board would consider funding some of those waste stations, and I'd work with Mike as to the proper location of where those might go within our public areas.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Number 20, discussion on the Wisconsin Department of Transportation 2020, 21, 2021 multimodal local supplement MLS program. A presentation by Max. Good evening, Max.
Thank you. Should I have copyright that, getting a couple dollars from Jerry or something? Anyway, so the Department of Transportation issued one-time grant program designed to address critical transportation needs through the state. And it was available for new projects relating to roads, bridges, transit projects, bicycle pedestrian accommodations, railroad and harbors with emphasis on economic impact and connectivity. So staff went through some of our projects or, that we have on our list, and based on those criteria, put together a list of five projects and put together the application material for those projects, which we submitted to, to the DOT. Those projects are the downtown west Riverwalk, the South Main Street reconstruction, the Trenton Road and Bridge, the reconstruction of Rusko Drive, and the reconstruction of Forest Avenue. So we submitted those applications to the DOT. We're supposed to get... We're supposed to get responses in January. So in January, we will know whether any of those projects was successful in getting some of the grant money. And at that point, the council can decide whether or not we want to accept the money and move forward with the project. It was a worthwhile effort, in our opinion, because the plan is to have the grant pay up to 90% of the total cost of the project. And it would be locally let by the city, so we would have control of the construction of those projects. So we wanted to share that information with the council, that, you know, that we submitted the applications, and hopefully in January, we can come back with good news.
Thanks, Max. Hopefully, they will look favorable upon us and grant us some of the money. Any questions for Max?
Yeah. Justice, go ahead. Yeah, I was just, wait, but no, what was my question? Oh, yeah, the reason that you picked those particular projects is because they kind of fit into the scope of what this MLS program is about?
Yes. Those obviously are projects that the city had been looking at to do in the very near future, such as the Riverwalk and the Forest Avenue reconstruction. Now, for Forest Avenue, what we had in mind here is that if that second development was not happening, but we were successful to get the funding here, then we could still do the reconstruction of that road. Obviously, the Riverwalk, it's been on our radar the past few months. The South Main Street reconstruction, we applied for the STPU grant. So we applied for this grant as well, and then hopefully, we get one of those. The other two projects, Trenton Road and Bridge, has been a project that was looked at in the early 2000s with the development of a TIF district. And that didn't see the light of day, but it's an essential transportation connection that will be needed in the future. So if we could get it funded, even if it was 50%, that would be great. And the other one is Rusko Drive, looking at the city network of arterial streets and the DOT recommendation to try to space those every mile. Rusko Drive made sense in its location. Right now, it's not used a lot, probably because of the road condition, but thinking about maybe improving that condition would help with more equal repartition of traffic throughout the city. That's, so those were some of the reasons. Also, like you said, because of the emphasis on economic impact and connectivity, we had to write in the narrative, those projects made sense to submit applications for.
Thanks, Max.
Was there a reason Seventh Avenue wasn't considered in here?
One of the reasons Seventh Avenue didn't make this list is the same reason why it was, how should I say this, one of the reasons why the DOT kind of shied away from it. The first time around where we applied for a STPU grant for this project, there are a lot of challenges with the topography. And in order to meet some of the requirements, especially with the ADA and the curb ramps and the sidewalk, we would have to build some retaining walls in the area, which would spike up the cost of the project. So the first time we had applied for STPU grant for that project, DOT had mentioned to us, maybe we want to keep that one out of this type of program. That's why we kept it out of this program.
Thank you. Rich?
Max, the Downtown West Riverwalk piece, is that inclusive of the underpass underneath 33, or is that?
Yes, it's the entire project, yes.
Alright, thanks.
Anybody else? No action either, right?
Nope.
Alright, item 21, a resolution transferring interests in Schmidt Road, Rolfs Avenue, and unnamed road to Washington County. And again, a presentation from Max.
Thank you. So this item is a follow-up to an intergovernmental agreement that the city and Washington County entered in 2015. Part of this agreement included the construction of Rolfs Avenue Extended, which the city has done, and then transfer of land between the city and the county in order to transfer jurisdiction to the county of Schmidt Road from Washington Street to the new Rolfs Avenue Extended. And also, a right-of-way that the city owned between Schmidt Road and the Highway Shop, the Washington County Highway Shop. And in all reconfiguration of Rolfs Avenue, there's a small triangle of current Rolfs Avenue, which will not be needed anymore because the road has a curve now. And the agreement listed all these pieces of land as needing to be transferred from the city and the county. So this item is following up on that 2015 agreement and making happen one of the terms of this agreement. So we're asking council to take that action when they did in the agreement. And if council agrees, then the city attorney has prepared the resolution for that purpose.
Thank you, Max. Any questions for Max, from anybody?
Justice, the long guy over here. What's the effect of this? Is, I mean, is the county going to be plowing these roads now, or?
Well, once the city transfers the road to the county, yes, it becomes their responsibility to do whatever they do with their road. My understanding is that they would vacate the roads. I think the idea, especially for Schmidt Road, was to reconnect the two pieces of land owned by the county into one piece, so they could have their own driveway, their own parking lot. And I'm not sure what their plan is.
Okay, yeah, I got you.
But their plan originally was to vacate all these roads and then turn it back to county property.
There's no other questions? Entertaining a motion on the item?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 22, approve the 2019-2022 fire contract with the town of West Bend.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item 23, approve appointment of Kathy Murphy, Larry Porter, and Herb Tenness to the Downtown Bid Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item 25, appointment of election workers, and the lists are in our packet.
And Steve, just to clarify, I'll be abstaining as my name's on the list.
Very good.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries. Item 26, ordinance attaching property within Area D of the boundary agreement area under the cooperative boundary plan between the city of West Bend and the town of West Bend, approximately 23.7 acres located at 4991 Roan Road. Well, there you are. I'm sorry, Mark. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. This annexation of about 24 acres is immediately south of the River Road Industrial Park. It's on the west side of Roan Road. It's an existing industrial parcel with an industrial building. The applicants, the current owners, as well as the future owners, have petitioned the city for the attachment from the town of West Bend to the city. They wish to obtain sewer and municipal water service to fully utilize their building and their site. The, there is existing sanitary sewer and water main at their driveway in the road. We provided that when we did the industrial park previously. The property itself is subject to the boundary agreement between the city and town of West Bend. The agreement does acknowledge that this is a piece of land that the town acknowledged that could come to the city by right upon a petition. We have transmitted the petition to the town and have not received any negative comments regarding it. We would recommend approving the attachment to the city.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mark? Chris?
I'll just say that I'm happy to see District 4 growing evermore, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Item number 27, report by Alderman Jenkins or Alderman Caston regarding the planning commission meeting.
Yeah, I think it's my turn. We had a pretty quick meeting. We approved a new electric sign for Madden Law Group Law in Washington, and we approved the annexation of the 24 acres we just approved here.
Any questions for Chris? If not, being no further business before the Common Council, I adjourn. Are there any announcements? If not, everyone have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and good night, everyone.